Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock. We will call the meeting to the order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Present.
Mr. Blades.
Present.
Mr. Gorman.
Present.
We have three present, two excused absences, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Approve of agenda.
So before we approve the agenda, there's a few things I'd like to move. First, I'd like to continue item number nine to the next meeting since Councilmember Hayman is not present to report. And I believe that in presentations, we need to move item number two to one and one to two. Is that reasonable?
Sure, yeah.
So with those changes, I move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Skip, can we have a second?
I'll provide a second.
Okay.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Need a roll call vote. Mr. Rajaratnam.
Yeah.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
I'm so out of order, I'm probably going to be saying the wrong names all night long again. Sorry. Mr. Gorman.
Aye.
Three ayes, motion carries.
Okay, so please rise for pledge of allegiance, please. Vice Mayor Blades, can you lead us on the page?
Yes, if everybody could please face the flag, put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer, if you would. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Lord, thank you for this beautiful town of Ridgecrest, which we cherish and live in. Lord, I pray for our country. Lord, give the leaders of our country your guidance. Lord, I pray for the unrest in Middle East. Lord, let there be peace soon, so that there will not be any more lives lost. Lord, I pray for all the families who lost their beloved ones. Give them your comfort, Lord. Lord, I pray for the police department we have in Ridgecrest. Lord, be with them always. They put their life on line to protect this community and also to save many lives, Lord. We thank you for such a beautiful police department we have. Lord, bless those families, Lord. Lord, as we observed Veterans Day last week, Lord, I thank you for all the veterans for their sacrifice. We are what we are today because of the sacrifice made by the veterans, Lord. I request you to bless the families of veterans and meet all their physical, emotional, and spiritual needs, Lord. Lord, be with us as we are going to discuss issues which are important to this community. Lord, give us your wisdom, so that we make the right decisions. In Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, next we have a couple of presentations.
So I believe we moved two to one, so do have any questions?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. Good with that? You ready?
All right. If I could have the Evan Etash Foundation and Toyota of Ridgecrest representatives, please join us up here at the podium. All of you, please. Pack around, I guess. You could stand right here, though.
Yep.
All right, so the Evan Etash Foundation and Toyota Ridgecrest, every year they partner with the police department and members of the community, and they provide such great support. So in 2022, they were, I mean, their dedicated service and countless contributions to the Ridgecrest Police Department's open house and all the citizens of Ridgecrest for everything they do deserves a lot of recognition. And again, for the 2023 open house, their dedication and the contributions, I mean, it's unheard of, what they do for everybody and the ability that they have to come together and put on these open houses and events, it's second to none. So I don't want to talk a bunch up here, because I want Mr. Etash to talk. So I'm going to present these plaques to Fred and Janelle Etash on behalf of the Ridgecrest Police Department and the City of Ridgecrest.
You know, Captain Tucker, we, he always gets me into these, and I don't like to speak in public, I have a hard time with it, but I thought that it's important for people to know that the foundation was created, believe it or not, we started doing yard sales. And we all started creating and gathering money from yard sales and different things to build us up and to be able to give to the youth in our community, which is dear to all of us here. And so we, from there, we grew into, I want to say to date, we checked, we have given out $344,000 in this community since 2012. We've slowly built up and we've accumulated and given to everybody we can in the community, and it's very important to us to do so. And we, it literally wouldn't be possible for us to do any of this without all of them behind us. They, at any call, any time, when one of the guys calls or Burrows or somebody like that, and we need to do an event, this is who we call. And they help us through everything from winter wonderlands to, God, trunk or treats to movie nights to earthquake events that we did. And they're always there for us. So I wanted to make sure that I was willing to come up here and choke out on this mic, so that they would get recognition for everything that they do. So thank you so much. What am I leaving out? Okay. Thank you, guys, very much. We're honored to get it again, and we really appreciate everything that is given back to us. So thank you.
Thank you. Everybody come on up here so we can get a picture. Just put up here in front of me.
We're getting all of us.
Everybody over here. It's all right, she can get you in. No, I'm going out of the way. I don't want to be in the background.
I mean, if they want to sit in. Sir, you're talking, it's a sit-in.
Okay, now everybody in will be in the police department, too.
Well, we can.
Okay, a couple more in front. You two on the end. There we go.
We got some more?
Yeah, we're in the back. Put it over you guys.
We'll peek in.
Stand on the chair.
One more.
All right, we're going to move on to the life-saving awards for Ridgecrest Police Officers. If I could have Sergeant Nathan Lloyd and Officer James Kieros join me down here? I don't know if Q is here today, though.
Q's out.
Q's out? Oh, okay. All right. This is a life-saving award presented to Sergeant Nathan Lloyd in recognition of his outstanding accomplishment and contributions in saving a life. On July 11, 2023, Sergeant Lloyd and Officer Kieros were dispatched to North Raballo Street concerning an individual who was not breathing. Upon arrival, the officers discovered the victim be unresponsive and without a pulse. Without delay, Sergeant Lloyd and Officer Kieros immediately initiated life-saving procedures, which included administering CPR and Narcan while waiting the arrival of Liberty Ambulance. The victim was transported by Liberty Ambulance to Ridgecrest Regional Hospital, where she later made a full recovery. Sergeant Lloyd and Officer Kieros are to be commended for their rapid decision-making, exemplary professionalism, and unwavering dedication to public safety, which ensured a positive outcome during a critical situation. Their proficiency in life-saving techniques played a pivotal role in saving this victim's life. Let's give a big round of applause to Sergeant Nathan Lloyd and Officer James Kieros for their efforts. And this is a number five, so this is his fifth one that he's gotten. Whoever called for speech, you can regret that. This award, I'm sorry that the officer's not here. I know it reads well to it, but it's a little skewed from the fact that my officer did the work with her. He was first on scene, found the individual in the back, and when I showed up, he was already CPR and did not look good. I did his system, because, you know, as a good supervisor does, right? Help the troops. But it really, his actions, again, it was right at the end of shift, it was a last-minute call to get in there and get this young lady the medical attention that she needed, is very impressive. And I wish he was here, but he's currently doing some medical stuff himself, so I wish he was here to, I could give it to him, put it. On a side note to derail it, going back to the Etash Foundation, I run the Explore Program. I don't know if I'm out of turn with the thing. And Fred and the support has always been supportive. We were selling, last year, the Explorers sell popcorn and candy to help raise money for their uniforms, and he walked up and said, hey, I'll buy you out right now, you distribute to that. And that kind of support is appreciated for them to see how wonderful a job this is, but also that we can get some of these youth off the streets, and hopefully they'll become great, outstanding citizens and maybe become firemen or something like that. So I appreciate your time, guys. Thanks. All right, can we get Officer Robert Henderson and Officer Ryan Smith to join us down here at the podium? All right, so we have Officer Ryan Smith and Officer Robert Henderson up here to receive a life-saving award, recognition of their outstanding accomplishments and contributions. On September 16, 2023, officers were dispatched to West Ridgecrest Boulevard regarding an unresponsive male who was barely breathing and turning blue. It was suspected that he had overdosed. Upon their arrival, Officer Henderson and Officer Smith immediately began life-saving measures to include CPR and administering Narcan. The victim regained pulse and was transported by Liberty Ambulance to Ridgecrest Regional Hospital, where he later made a full recovery. Officer Henderson and Officer Smith are to be commended on their swift response, effective collaboration, and proficiency in life-saving technique, which resulted in preventing the life of, preserving the life of the suspect, subject. These officers exemplify the highest standards of law enforcement and are an inspiration to the community they serve. Let's give them a big round of applause for their life-saving efforts. Get Officer Logan Beebe to join us down here, please. And Officer Kyle Cushman to join us down here, please. Well, he's on the call, probably saving someone's life. So. Have Officer Beebe up here. We're going to recognize his outstanding accomplishment and contributions. On September 17, 2023, officers were dispatched to an incident involving an unresponsive 15-year-old girl who had overdosed. Upon their arrival, the father was holding the lifeless victim in his arms in front of the residents. Officer Beebe swiftly assessed the severity of the situation, and Officer Cushman promptly administered Narcan. Their coordinated efforts were instrumental in reviving the victim and stabilizing her condition until additional medical assistance arrived. The actions demonstrated by Officer Cushman and Officer Beebe exemplify the highest standards of law enforcement and serve as an inspiration to their colleagues as well as the community they serve. Their rapid decision-making, professionalism, and unwavering dedication to public safety played a crucial role in ensuring a positive outcome during a critical situation. Officer Cushman and Officer Beebe are to be commended for their swift response, effective collaboration, and proficiency in life-saving techniques, which undeniably contributed to the saving of this young woman's life. Give them a big round of applause.
We'll stand in the back.
In the back?
No, you guys will be in front of us. We'll speak to you.
Perfect. Thank you all, thank you very much for coming. Okay, we'll move on. Public comments of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Council will not respond to any public comments, but may provide direction to staff to collect the information. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not act on an item that does not appear on this agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Now I'll open the public comment session. Any comments from the chambers, sir?
Is this where we? Yeah, just make sure the mic's on first. It's green, so it should be on.
My name is Robert Blackwell, and I am a tribal advisor and spokesman for the Kaiwatu tribe. The tribe has been existence in, okay. Okay, so my name is Bob Blackwell, and I'm a spokesman and tribal advisor for the Kaiwatu tribe. This tribe has had its territory in the area of Ridgecrest for well over 10,000 years. They are a very quiet, respectful people. Starting in 1850, they went through a series of genocidal actions by the state of California and local settlers. Last weekend, on the weekend of the Petroglyph Festival, they staged an influential protest to, at the Petroglyph Festival, and you have some information about that, it's there in green. It went very, very well. People were respectful, and more importantly, most of the key stakeholders from the festival to the museum, to the Speaker's Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce type of officials reached out, and we've had extremely good reaction to that. But there's one issue that's important that I wanted to bring up to the city. A lot of the art that was placed in this, on city property, in state property, by the City of Ridgecrest, I think it's the City of Ridge, because we really don't know. The art is kind of cheap copies of native art. The natives, the local natives, have found it objectionable. The art is their religion, and so what the local tribe would like to propose is a joint effort by the city and the tribal officials to do a survey of the art that is on city property in the public, to have it reviewed. Some of it is just purely objectionable. Other parts of it may be real native art from the rocks. And in that case, the tribal elders believe that the city and the community should get permission before they take tribal art and put it throughout the city. By written, information's a little bit more in-depth, and I'm not going through all the history, and you guys can read it. The local tribe has gone through 175 years of repeated genocidal actions, and a lot of the wealth in the Kern County area is generated by land that was taken from them in 1850. They were put in concentration camps, bounties were put on their heads, and so there's a real long-sorted history. And the natives expect the community to be as respectful to their religion and culture and beliefs as they are to the greater Ridgecrest community and other people. So if there's any questions or comments, I'm more than happy to, you know, speak to them.
Thanks, Mr. Blackwell. Thanks for bringing this to our notice. So our staff will reach out if needed and address your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, any other comments on the phone? Give it a minute. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment session, and we'll move on to the next item, council announcements and directions.
I do have one announcement, and that is, you know, it's something that we do every year. It's to honor, we're going to honor it today, November 22. If you look, the flowers right ahead for Charlotte Braitman Day. And if everybody will allow me, I'm going to read in total the letter from the Braitman family here to the council. And that is that, I quote, "Our family moved from New York to China Lake in 1948, when my father, Jack Braitman, was employed helping to design missiles at the Naval Ordnance Test Station. Although he passed away a few years later, my mother, Charlotte Braitman, remained in California, was employed on the base. In 1997, when she departed the Indian Wells Valley, the city council declared November 22 as Charlotte Braitman Day in the City of Ridgecrest. It was meant to recognize her many years helping others in the community. No one anticipated that she would pass away less than a year after moving to Ventura. The city council's thoughtful gesture of declaring a day in her honor was a very special tribute. As a means of remembering this day, we are delivering flowers to brighten the city hall as our mother brightened the lives of those around her. We extend best wishes to the City of Ridgecrest and entire Indian Wells Valley." That is from Bob Braitman. And I think the only other comment I wanted to make was just to express my appreciation for the Etash Foundation and all the good that they do in the name of such a worthy cause, especially for the police department. And that I will, I'll do some reading up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Blades. Any announcements, Mr. Gorman?
I'm sorry.
Any announcements, Councilman Gorman?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't have any, so except that we received a nice thank you card from the Annals Tower for the city's cooperation in bringing that and making it a grand success. I want to thank the staff for taking care of this and making this a big event, and they said they are going to have this in their agenda in the future. So we'll be very grateful to see these things happen in our community. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. I will now read the three consent items. Item number three, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council regular meeting dated October 18, 2023. Item four, grant application for a United States Department of Justice, Byrne Justice Assistant Grant. Number five, a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council authorizing acceptance of the State of California Office of Traffic Safety Step Grant. Does any member of the council wishes to have an item pulled?
I do not.
Does any member of the public wishes to have an item pulled? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I shall move. Second.
You have a motion and second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rojeratnum?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Three ayes, motion carries.
Okay, let's move on to discussion items. Item six, approval of a city of Ridgecrest records retention schedule. Charla.
Yes, council. It was realized that we needed to update our records retention schedule in order to keep information current and records efficiently maintained. So my office, along with the city attorney, took on the task. I did some research, and I could not find where we had ever updated the one we're currently using, which is the January of 2012 version. So to my understanding, this would be the first update we've taken since then. We went through, and we made it compliant with state law and all records now. Like I said, the attorney has reviewed my work here, and the one thing that's changing as a majority change is that there were, the items will no longer come to council for approval when they're destruction, ready for destruction. Instead, what we're going to do is I've created a log, and as long as they are within our new system, then the department head and the city manager and myself will sign off on this log after they put a description on here, and then I'll keep this log in my office so that you guys, anybody could see it at any time. So that's the only notable change as far as the process, and I'm open for any questions you guys might have.
No questions here. Seems to make sense.
Okay.
Any questions, sir?
No, no questions.
I do have one question. So I think sometime back, we talked about digitalizing, like making electronic copies of all our records. Is that still on the plate, or?
The only one thing I remember is Travis's was undertaking that. Is that the same one you're speaking of?
Well, I think when it came to Travis's stuff, we talked about it, but we realized maybe the expense was so great that we were going to slow-walk that one. Was that, was that true? Did I remember remembering that correctly? Yeah?
There we go.
Oh.
Yeah.
Makes sense. I think I have no further questions.
And Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to thank the city clerk who did an incredible job on this. She and her department did a lot of the work. I had a chance to review it and made a few suggestions, but it was very well done.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we need to approve this?
Yes, sir. We'll take public comment, and then we can make a motion.
Do I have a motion to approve?
We should see if there's any public comment on this, Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Any?
Any public comment from the floor? Seeing none, any public comments on the phone? Okay, no public comments.
I move to approve item number six.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Rojeratnum?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Three ayes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, proposed approval of increased appropriation to the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget to cover increased costs related to animal shelter laundry project. Staff report from Captain Tucker.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, sir.
I have Mr. Reed up here as well, because he's involved in the project, and he has some more specifics on some of the increases in costs. When the 2024 budget was submitted, the Ridgecrest City Council approved $50,000 for the Ridgecrest Animal Shelter Laundry Project. This project included purchasing heavy-duty, commercial-grade washers and dryers for the shelter, along with what was believed to be minor electrical panel upgrades to the site. As the project was initiated, it was determined that the cost to upgrade the electrical components was extremely underestimated due to several factors that include general cost increases due to limited inventory and availability, obsolete inadequate components currently being used, and larger scope work in bringing the shelter's electrical components to the needed specifications. Additionally, some concrete work is also needed to complete a foundation pedestal for the commercial equipment to be mounted on. Staff is requesting an increase in appropriations in account 100 dot 20 dot 2010 dot 5309 dot 000. It's the Prop 172, other capital account, from $50,000 to $75,000. Presently, the shelter has several residential-grade washers and dryers that are operating for eight-plus hours a day to keep up with the laundry demands of the facility. The new commercial-grade washers and dryers will cut the loads by two-thirds and save immensely on staff time and energy use. The fiscal impact will be $25,000 that will come from Prop 172 reserves, and we're requesting approval of increased appropriations as requested in the summary.
So just to elaborate on some of the issues we ran into, so as you guys all know, the animal shelter is a former wastewater treatment plant that was 100% assumed because we had a three-phase panel there, that there was three-phase power. At the time of decommissioning, and we do not have any record of it, and after talking to some people on the base, it was fairly common back in the late 70s and the early 80s. When they decommissioned the plant and deemed that the ACL they needed single-phase electrical, they pulled the third leg from the panel, so effectively cutting your voltage from 480 to 120, 240. We've been working closely with Edison. We're scheduling to have our electrical contractor back out to basically reinstall the third leg. Edison's going to pull the third leg of power back in, but it required a meter socket change, CT change, stuff, so we could power these washer and dryers. I am not authorized to open a panel that is of that voltage. You have to have a whole bunch of different arc flash gears. Until we opened the panel and really could get inside and see what was going on, we had no idea what we were up against. As for the concrete, when we looked at their washer and dryer originally, they had no specifications online for what the foundation was, but once you placed the order, they sent us this detail that basically said you have to cut the floor out, and it has to have enough weight to keep the washer and dryer from overturning should the load become unbalanced. So that's what we're designing and why we're cutting the floor and doing concrete upgrades over there. Additionally on that, we have some plumbing concerns. We had to add a drainage trough. We had to add a eight-inch vent for the dryer. Currently, residential dryers use a four-inch vent, so we've had a numer, quite a few small but costly challenges due to the nature of the project and the fact that we've got 1950s infrastructure over there. So with that said, we're hoping we can keep it to this 25 grand, but when we open the ground up, we don't know what we're going to find.
Thank you, sir.
So I guess my question would be, Travis, is this like other projects you can do where you could add a contingency, so we don't have to come back and re-approve an additional amount?
So on normal occasions, I would say yes. The problem with this is it's more of a procurement of equipment, so it didn't really fall under the construction base. So when we budgeted for it and we did all of our work on this project, it was more of an equipment, a swap and replace, add an electrical panel back there, and we were going to be done. So it's kind of morphed into a construction project, so I really don't know, and maybe that's more of a question for Martin. I don't think with how we've written the resolution and stuff like that, that a contingency would be, nor would I know what to put a contingency on, because we haven't opened the floor up yet. We're opening the floor up Monday, should this be approved.
Okay. Well, and I also want to ask the very seemingly dumb question of both the city manager and Martin, Prop 172 reserves is appropriate place to pull these funds from?
Correct. And the way that the item was agenda is provides the council with the flexibility to, because the agenda says proposed approval of increased appropriations for the fiscal 23-24. Resolution does state 25,000, but that resolution can be amended during the motion, and the final resolution could reflect the number that the council would authorize if staff would need some additional funding, so they don't need to return in case something else
So if there isn't enough, sorry to interrupt you, Martin. So if there is enough funds in that Prop 172, is it not just responsible, just to increase this to what you need to do for the entire project? Are you worried about 25K not being enough?
I-
I mean, I know you can estimate a project pretty good in your head, so that's why I'm asking you the question.
Depending on what we find, I do think it might be prudent to add a 20% contingency just to give us the flexibility to not hold the project up, so another 15 grand to make sure we can cover everything and not slow everything down, because it's going to be a huge nuisance to the ACO staff. And the longer we have to wait and the longer they're without those washer and dryers in the winter seasons, it becomes extremely burdensome on them.
Okay. So I'd like to ask the council, I submit that we add that contingency if you guys all agree with that, after your questions and grilling of Travis.
That would be a 20% on the total of 75K.
Any other questions?
That's my only questions, and that's my suggestion to the council when we go to approve, but I'll wait to see what you guys say.
Councilman Gorman?
I have a couple of fussy machines in my shop that demand three-phase, and I'm holding my breath that everything stays okay until at least I'm dead, because I know it complicates everything. And if I had any advice to who was operating the system, even after you upgrade it, and that is clean the lint trap regularly.
Don't worry, we're going to set the trap up. It's actually got a sensor in it to where if the lint trap is not clean enough, it will automatically shut itself down and tell them, clean the lint trap.
That ubiquitous AI.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, just for a little more clarification, we knew going into this project that we estimated 50,000. We hoped it would be 50,000 or nearabouts that we could find the funding somewhere else in the PD budget. But obviously, the getting into electrical and the concrete work that needs to be done raised the cost a little bit. It was initially budgeted out of Prop 172, using additional funds out of 172 is appropriate. Whatever funds are not used, I mean, if you raise the amount to 75,000 or whatever, you know, maybe 100, maybe to 100,000, it doesn't matter, because we're only going to use the funds that are needed, and whatever's not used goes back into the account. It's a holding account.
Well, and that's exactly as I understood it. I just don't want them to have to, well, we can't move forward on the project, we can't get this done, because when I come back to the council-
No, we would find the money elsewhere. I mean, if we were 3,000 or 4,000 over, we would find it elsewhere in the PD budget and make it work, so.
Understood. Sure.
So I'm confused now. Are we doing the contingency or not?
All Ron was saying is we don't have to.
Yeah, we can do it.
All Ron was saying is we don't have to, and what I'm saying is I'm suggesting that we do, that we raise, that we alter this number to at least be up to 90K instead of the 75.
Sure.
That's my suggestion.
That's fine. There are sufficient funds in the account for that.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the way that I read that is at the bottom of the resolution, I'm going to write, approves the increase to account, like, in the amount of 25,000 plus a 20% contingency of 15,000 for a total of 40,000 from the Prop 172 funds. Is that okay?
I wouldn't, I don't think this is- Because the 20% number exact, or should we just simply say increase, approve the increase of 40,000 for a total of 90? So don't mention the contingency.
20% is exact, because it was 50 before, 25 after, so 20%.
We'll just raise it by 40K and not even worry about the contingency and all that, and we're good. So I'll change the resolution to state that when you continue your motion.
We still need to hear from the public on this, if there's any comments.
Absolutely.
Any comments from the public?
Come up to the podium.
Just so it's on record and people can hear what you're saying.
As a, just happened to be here tonight, I have actually worked at the animal shelter as a volunteer, and I've worked and been around a lot of the animal shelter. It's the best-run animal shelter, and I want to compliment the police department. It is just, every single night or during the day, they take out a blanket for each dog and cat and wash it. So it is a very, very busy place, and I can tell you, because I put stuff in those washers and dryers, they're just regular ones you have in your house. So that's, the staff there is overworked, and the laundry is a big problem, not big problem, they make it work, but they might have 50 blankets a day to wash, and they wash every one every night to keep it safe and clean. So I just happen to be here, so I'm going to make my comment now. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Bain, and I'm here to support the approval of this increased appropriation. I think the animal shelter contributes a lot to the quality of life in the city of Ridgecrest. If we didn't have that shelter, we would have a lot of increased problems with police callouts, animals, stray animals, possible bites, animals suffering in the heat and the cold. So I really, I think that shelter adds a lot to our town, and if we can give these folks that work so hard the tools that they need to be more efficient, let's do it, because if we don't have to have someone doing laundry eight hours a day, they may be able to go out there and do more callouts, go help more animals, and so on and so forth, so.
Try 14 hours a day.
14 hours a day. I know. And anything we can do to help out Mary, who I happen to think is a saint, I say, let's do it.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other comment from the floor? Any comments on the phone? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council? Any final comments, sir?
Nope, I just would like to make a motion to approve with the suggested changes, with the amendments.
I second the motion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rojeratnum?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Three ayes, motion carries.
Thanks, Mr. Reed. Thanks, Officer Tucker.
Thank you, council.
Next item, item number eight, proposed action to adopt a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council amending the administrative purchasing policy to include paper purchasing requirements per California SB 1383 regulations. Ms. McHendry?
Thank you, yeah. It's a mouthful. I won't read the staff report verbatim. I think you can pretty much get the gist of it from the title. This is a resolution to formalize our paper purchasing policy to meet the right requirements of SB 1383. A little bit of background for anybody who's not familiar already. One of the SB 1383 requirements requires all paper products and printing and writing paper purchased by the jurisdiction to be at least 30% post-consumer recycled content fibers and be recyclable. So that's the main point. The city's already been purchasing paper that meets that standard, but this is just a way of formalizing that policy that SoCalRecycle is happy with our formalized policy. So I spoke with the finance department and got some of our more commonly-used vendors, which include Pack Wrap Business Center and Staples for the printing and writing paper, and Central Sanitary Supply and Waxy Sanitary Supply for the janitorial toilet paper and things like that. So one of the things that vendors are required to do is provide paper products meeting those requirements of public section codes 2020-150 to 22-154, ensure that all of the paper and writing paper are eligible to be labeled with an unqualified recyclable label. So one of the ways that you can verify that is also through labeling, which is a lot of how the paper comes already, so that would be sufficient. And then the other components of the updated purchasing policy include record-keeping requirements, so that any staff member who purchases the paper knows what the requirements are for the recycled content, and then knows how to, sorry, report and record that, so that way we can report that to CalRecycle. So I will pause there. If there's any specific questions, I can go more into details on the process or the recording. And one thing is, there is a stipulation, so there are not a stipulation, more of some wiggle room there. So, and it reads, if fitness and quality are equal, staff should purchase recycled paper products whenever recycled paper products and writing paper are available at the same or lesser total cost than non-recycled items, or at a total cost of no more than 5% of the total cost for non-recycled items. So if there's something specific that we, you know, the recycled paper is way too much more, that 5%, it does give us wiggle room, so we can, it's not saying that everything has to be 100% recycled, but there are some certain requirements for that.
Any questions or more detail on anything for any-
or more detail on anything for anybody?
A few questions that I think would be on my mind from the public, and that is, are we already meeting those requirements just inherently?
We are. This is just a way of formalizing it, so it's on our policy. Like I said, staff has been doing this since before I came on, so all of the printing paper that we use is currently labeled 30% post-consumer material, so we are already checking those boxes. It's just more of a way of formalizing it for CalRecycle standards. And then, so staff has a written, you know, way to reference how to track and record moving forward in the future.
Sure. Which answers the follow-on question, is there any fiscal impact? And it sounds like.
So the only fiscal impact would be if.
If we had to change our purchasing.
Right, right. So it really shouldn't impact us unless.
It shouldn't unless it's taken out of your time to do additional recording for CalRecycle.
Right. And that's why I'm hoping that the staff, we have, so I, one of the last bullet points under the purchasing procedures and record keeping requirements requires city staff who do any paper purchases to within 30 days of that purchase, put a copy of the records in a city public folder that's clearly labeled. That way I can easily look it up and instead of having to track down all the individual purchases, I should be able to just have a running record that I can just pull from.
The kind of thing that's auditable at some point by CalRecycle if they wish.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're lucky enough to have our IT department do all of our paper ordering. So we don't have every different department ordering, so IT does it all for us.
Awesome.
Yeah, it'll pretty much be all IT, so that'll keep it pretty simple. The only other things, maybe, I'm not sure, Parks and Rec, I know you guys do flyers and stuff. Does IT order all your paper for them? Okay, I figured. And then the only other thing might be the janitorial paper, but again, it's, we only have two major suppliers, so it's pretty.
I'm sure we made it already. Okay.
So really not much change, it's just a matter of putting in writing and having council approve it.
Gotcha.
Councilman Gorman. Just curiosity, I love cultural fixes like this. I'm reminded that they put a red light on top of the Eiffel Tower so that airplanes don't smack into it. Do you anticipate what with the advent of SB 1383, that slowly and surely the cost of recycled certified paper may increase, will increase?
Yeah, I would, like I just said, I would wager a bet that, like everything, it will increase because that just seems to be the way of the world, unfortunately, with the way costs are going. I don't think it will increase to a point where going to non-recycled would be any fiscal benefit for us. I don't think non-recycled paper is going to be necessarily a lot cheaper than recycled paper, but.
I agree. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. I do have a couple of questions. So do we still make purchases from Staples?
Yeah, our primary vendors for printing and writing paper are Staples and Pack Wrap Business Center, according to our finance department. And I'm sure there's a couple smaller ones, but these are bulk, the majority of paper comes from Staples, and then we do business with Pack Wrap as well.
So we buy online from Staples?
Yes, I believe so. The IT orders in bulk.
Okay. And I see administrative purchasing policy attached here.
Yes. So we just inserted a new section specifically for paper purchases, just to keep it all in one succinct area rather than adding some and record keeping some here. So it's all just its own section. So it's inserted as X underneath surplus supplies and equipment, and four definitions and special requirements. So that's, everything else in the existing policy was unchanged. That was the only additional language added.
Just for curiosity, item two, purchasing authority, doesn't give the limits for city clerk and IT department. Is there any reason why that was not included in this?
I'll go ahead and pass that one over to City Manager Strand as him and Shree handled all of those parts of the amendments for the purchasing policy.
What section are you referring to?
This is about the limits or the, who has the authority, the purchasing authority, section two, very, very beginning of the document.
Oh, section two.
Yeah, so I didn't touch that section of the document, so I don't, I can't speak to that, but.
What was the question?
What was the question again regarding the purchasing authority?
Purchasing authority, city clerk and IT manager, so no limits were stipulated here. I'm just curious why that was not included here.
Well, one, they're not department heads. So they're, they're not department heads, so they're not within that chain. Yeah, this was covered during the budget, that normally if Rick or Matt has to purchase something, they have to come through us, like it would be for Captain Tucker or Megan.
But it says there are six positions authorized to make purchases, so that's why I had that question, which includes IT and city clerk, so.
I think the confusion is coming because we had just talked about how IT handles our paper purchases for the city.
It does give the provision there where the department may delegate a purchasing authority up to 5,000, and city manager has delegated an authority to me and to Matt to make purchases.
Okay.
Yeah. It's less than 5,000.
So you don't have separate limits then, right?
Only what was delegated to us, which it states right here up to $5,000, and we have been given a limit. Anything above that, we have to go to city manager for signature.
Okay. Is it correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Any comments from the floor? Seeing none, any comments on the phone? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any final comments?
Nothing from me. I move to approve.
I second.
We have a motion to approve. Second roll call, please.
Mr. Roger Rotnum?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Three ayes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Megan. Item number nine, discussion regarding the Board of Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. So this item would be carried to the.
Yeah, we.
Next meeting.
Continue this one.
Continue to the next meeting. So I don't need to call for any comments or anything? Thank you.
That was done through the agenda approval.
Next item, public hearing, item number 10, a public hearing and resolution approving the fiscal year 2024-2025 annual application regarding the Kern County Community Block, Community Development Block Grant Program. So this also.
So because we did advertise it as a public hearing, I do need you to open the public hearing and then just announce that we're going to continue it to the next meeting of December 6, and then you can take public comment if you'd like, or I don't know if that's required, and then we can close it.
What I would recommend is that by motion, the council opens the public hearing and continues it to the next meeting, the date certain, so we don't have to republish it. You have a choice of either accepting any public comments that are here today, if anybody has any public comments, or simply asking that the people come back when this item is presented in full, and not accept any public comments until the next meeting. Those are the two choices for the council to make as part of the motion.
So if you open for the public comment, we will again open it next time?
Yes.
Well, it'll, it's a continued public hearing. The formality of opening it will be observed at the next meeting. So if, in my opinion, it makes a cleaner record if all of the comments are received at one meeting during the one hearing. So my recommendation would be to open a public hearing, not take any public comment, continue it to the next meeting, which will be December.
6th.
6th. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll open the item for public hearing and continue it to the next council meeting on December 6.
Yes, if we could have a motion and a second, and we'll take roll call on that motion.
I shall move.
Second.
Mr. Roger Rotnum?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Three ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. RACVBE.
Hello, this is the report from October 25, so last month. So the Petroglyph Festival was the 4th and the 5th. At the time of this report, it hadn't happened yet. We know, I do have some more data on that now, but just to keep it on the committee report, I'll focus on what we talked about on October 25. So Carrie did mention that the Tabada Lottle, and I'm probably butchering that pronunciation, so I apologize.
Tewa Twabble.
Tewa.
Let's start.
No disrespect intended, but they were being recognized at the festival, which I thought was really awesome. So there was a ceremony, and then, of course, they brought the powwow back. Unfortunately, the Petroglyph tours are still not happening, and I did get an update that it's likely that they will not reopen for at least five years plus, if even then. So I know that the RACVBE was originally looking for alternate locations to do tours, but there's just so many challenges with either access, whether they're on private property, or because they're such sensitive areas and there's lack of security in some of the places that they don't want to bring attention to those super fragile resources that don't have protection. So there's likely not going to be tours for a while, unfortunately. I know they do have the VR headset ones, not quite the same, but that's a little bit of bad news, unfortunately. But there was a great turnout, and I'll share with you guys at the next update, some of those numbers that we got. I don't know, I know Kyle and a few others may have attended the CCAP Industry Days event that was going on today and yesterday over at Kermit G. Center as a networking event for NOS China Lake and contractors. There is an upcoming marathon with Over the Hill Track Club is doing an ultra marathon in December of '23, which is probably going to be a pretty big event, so potential to grow that event, promote it and market it, and see who, see if we can get a good turnout for that. The Desert Empire Fairground was obviously, that was the big topic of discussion, seeing as that it was just the previous weekend before our meeting. That was a great turnout. I do have some numbers for that. That weekend, we saw roughly 43,000 people that attended the fair, and a lot of those were, a lot of locals, but there was also quite a lot of traffic coming from Bakersfield, and I'm sure that the Tunnels to Towers Memorial had a lot to do with that because that was heavily promoted in the Bakersfield area. And that was kind of a once in a, once in a, I don't want to say lifetime, but it was a big deal. And so I think that drew in a lot of extra travelers to come see that. We saw in the Star Report that there was a huge boom of occupancy on Friday due to the Desert Empire Fair, most likely. It was up 22%. So that was good to see that we're bringing in people, putting heads in beds. Carrie will be meeting with the hotel owners again to just kind of discuss what their needs are again moving forward with the increased T-Bid. They will be hiring, the RACVBE will be hiring a position for tourism manager, hopefully in around December of '23, so that will hopefully again help them with managing some of the local events as well as the filming and stuff. Speaking of filming, we had two productions in September, three in October, and they were, at that, at the date of the meeting, five inquiries from November to January. So there was that question of whether the government was going to shut down, so there was potentially maybe a wrench going to be thrown in there, but it is the 15th, so I'm hoping that we've, we're out of those woods. I'm not sure if anybody has any updates on that, looking at government person. Okay. So.
That's all Congress's.
I just, you work on base, so I'm like, do you know? Let's see. Then a couple just other EXO reports. There was also the moto race and bike race on the 28th, so as we all know, really busy couple weekends in the, towards the end of October. The snore race was on the 21st, again, that same weekend with the fair. And the BLM is currently working on trail restoration to get those trails and those off-roading courses up to speed. So we also had a presentation from Scott O'Neill, who gave the same presentation to our Economic Development Committee previously about the Inyo Kern Air Service. So again, he's looking for fundraising for Phase One of doing the study and a needs assessment. So he gave that pitch to RACVBE as well, and they're going to explore potential for providing support for that. And other than that, there was one other just note here, Visit California, 10-year strategic plan for the desert region. There's an opportunity to kind of, again, get in there with them, and they have a lot of tourism experts that I think have good feedback, and so Carrie's been working with them pretty closely as well as the filming commission. So that was all the notes I had from the October 25th meeting. So I'll go ahead and pause if anybody has any questions or clarifications on anything.
Nothing here.
Okay.
With regard to the airport, this city is a big stockholder in that airport, stakeholder, forgive me. Is, is the city looking at ultimately helping with some initial funding to get this latest program going?
So he did present in economic development, and Kyle, I'll let you jump in. Go ahead.
So at the economic, when Scott presented to us at the Economic Development Committee, we recommended that he get directly in touch with the city manager and discuss, like if there was going to be some financial support, then he can discuss that directly with the city manager. But we gave our committee support to his endeavor, to that Phase One, and really that's what he needed, because if they can't get enough people interested with the Phase One, then it's a non-starter. And Phase One is just to figure out if the proposal is going to be tenable or not, so.
Yeah. And Skip, just for, just for your benefit, just an FYI, Scott did provide this update at the RACVBE, so they're looking, he's looking for around $50,000 for the initial Phase One study for the investment. Currently, he's approximately 10% of what he needs, so just a little status update there on his efforts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have any question. Thanks, Megan.
Yep, thank you.
Infrastructure Committee?
Yeah, you bet. So that's, goes all the way back to the 26th, and I'll try to breeze through this. Some of it may have changed with that amount of time. We've had a lot going on. Ward Phase One was just almost completely done, at least back on the 26th. There was, the contractor, I believe it was Everlevel, had some things to go back and fix, and I think they may have gotten that fixed by now. Nope, not quite yet. Okay, they're still working on that. So we move on to Phase Two, Ward Phase Two, which if you, if you go that way, if you're on that side of town, you've probably already encountered, that's moving forward. From what I understand, they haven't brought the asphalt in yet, but they will, it's a weather issue. So. So it's moving along. Yep. Another week and a half, and Ward Phase Two should be complete. That's the projection. Bowman Shell, Travis has a plan. That's all I'm going to say. Travis has a plan to get past some known issues that have been discussed for a long time. And it seems like I'm breezing across these, it's because I am. We discussed a lot in that meeting, and if anybody ever has questions or they want to sit down and get the benefit of sitting with the Public Works Director, which not many people get that amount of time, come to an infrastructure meeting. It's a very valuable hour where you get unadulterated time with Travis Reed. The pool is moving along. Should be out to bid by the end of this year, so hopefully breaking ground around April timeframe. Is that still roughly okay? Yeah. Things change by the day, so that's why I'm, if it sounds like there's a question in my voice, that's why. The wastewater treatment plant, is that about a 40% design? I'm moving along. Softball fencing, I'm going to look at Nerissa. That's going, that was, that was on the 26th, that was getting ready to go out to bid. Huh? It's out to bid. Awesome. All right, thanks. Bids come out tomorrow for those that didn't hear. Let's see. There's a lot of ongoing crack fill, which includes some sewer fixes. Traffic studies are completely intersection of Mahan and Epp John, as well as Mahan and Ridgecrest Boulevard. Traffic signals are going to be upgraded. We went, we went through a lot of stuff. That's coming November, December timeframe. Measure V projects for this cycle are almost complete. Mahan, certain improvements from Bowman and Springer are going to be an upcoming RSTP project for '25. That could always slide, but the plan is in place. Clean California Grant, work for tennis courts improvements is now out to bid. Is that still a correct statement? Right on. First phase is open today, second phase tomorrow. Is that what I heard? Okay. Prefab for Leroy Jackson next to the softball fields should show up around June. Does that sound correct still? Okay, cool. All right, that's, till ahead.
Thanks, Wise Mayor Blades.
I skipped across a lot of it. We went over a lot of stuff.
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions? Yeah, any questions for me for infrastructure? Okay.
I don't have any. CTR, the meeting was canceled. Next is Economic Development Committee. Economic Development map is being updated. Megan is working on that. Sure, thank you. And a couple of new businesses are coming. Kung Fu Tree, it's boba tea shop. And Tap That Axe, it's an axe throwing sport, I think.
Yeah, I think I saw it over there where the old Sizzler used to be, over near in that area. There used to be a gas station there when I was younger.
And updates, Mahavi View Apartments, they received the certificate of occupancy and as per last update, they have 50% occupancy. And we talked about Kern County updates. K E C D Industry Sector Video, the video did not work at that time, so. Okay, all right, thank you. And Kern County Energy Summit, that is on the 15th today, right? Yesterday? Today or yesterday? Today, yeah. Downtown Balsam Street revitalization, the sewer work projected to reach completion on, by 15th of December. And CGA banner program, pending delivery for local contractor installation, projected completion by the end of the year. And we talked about Farmer's Market. Staff will continue to explore that option and an update will be given in January sometime. And then we talked about community event recap. Desert Empire Fair features Tunnels and Towers, that was on the October 20th. We had 42,800 attendees for that fair event. And then Trunk Art Treat, which was on the October 27th, more, around 3,000 attendees. And then Booze Off Balsam, 4,000 attendees. And then the Petroglyph Festival, around 7,400 attendees. So all the events are well attended, in my opinion, so that's a great, kudos to the organizers, which is the city, REC V B, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. So thank you all for taking care of those events. And then we talked about Economic Outlook Conference. The conference is scheduled for February 22nd. Location is at Kermit G Center and then they are looking for sponsorships. So, yeah, one thing I want to add, because of the use of plaster AI, we were able to get better data and then we were able to find out where the attendees are going before and after the event. The number one spot they went was Walmart. So that's all I have from Economic Development Committee meeting. Thank you. Any questions?
No questions from me.
That was interesting about people leaving those venues and going to Walmart. I'm interested though, also if there are other pieces of interesting data that may have fallen out our new location analytics capability for venues like that.
Yes.
I'm hearing a yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Parts and Rec Quality of Life, Mr. Gorman, Councilman Gorman, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. We had, we, we took advantage of the committee's scheduling to have the swimming pool, this pool complex. What do you, what is the fellow's title who held forth and showed us all those pictures?
President of the company.
Okay, and his name?
Scott Gardiner.
I was just testing you.
I kind of figured that.
He held forth with pictures everyone's been looking forward to, which is a virtual finalization of the pool complex even after Mayor Braun's adjustment of the complex's footprint. And we had a respectable gallery here for that, even though his presence came up fairly late. And those illustrations and renderings, I thought, were well distributed on Facebook and other media. And it was all informational and well received. That's, that's all I have to offer for that committee meeting.
Thank you, sir. I don't have any que, any questions?
No questions from me.
Okay, Finance Committee, neither Mayor Eric or Councilman Heyman are here, so we will probably have that report in the next meeting. And next item on the agenda is other committees, boards or commissions. Vice Mayor Blades.
So I have Kern Cog coming up tomorrow. That's all I have to report on, really.
Thank you, sir. City Managers Report, please.
Yeah, Mr. Gorman, just to elaborate on the plaster AI. Yes, we, we have been running some reports on events like the Petroglyph Festival, Booze Off Balsam Street and the fair. Specifically, the fair, we did notice a, a significant amount of additional people on that Saturday. One of the unique things was, is that we did notice that there was about 23% of the people that were at the fair overall were from out of town. In other words, more than 20 miles away. But when you look at the year before, although there was some number less, that proportionality of the people that came from out of town was still about 23%. This year, we had a large number of people from the Bakersfield area, which kind of corresponded with a little bit of the marketing that the Visitors Bureau did regarding the Tunnel to Towers. So there is some unique data that's coming out, nothing specific as, as individuals. We did find out that, you know, and how we, how we search the database based upon the categories, the type of events, kind of depends on the number you come up with on the visitors, because it is an algorithmic formula calculation that they use to come up with these numbers. So, yeah, some of the data is, is very interesting. We have shared it with the Visitors Bureau, the Chamber and then the, the fairgrounds, but really nobody other than that. So we, we are taking a look at the data. It, it is a, you know, it, it is a level of effort that you have to put in to learn how to use the system. Right now, there's only going to be two people that are inquiring, it'd be Megan and I, nobody else. So that's pretty much where we're at. And I can, I can share some of this data when I do these reports. I can forward it to council so you can take a look at it. It's fairly high level stuff, but it is interesting to read, especially when we're looking at how we get, you know, people off the highway, how do we market stuff? You know, where do people go after the event? If we have an event, you know, who, who benefits from it? A lot of times, it's our, our local restaurants that see, with that activity, see more people that are actually coming to the restaurant after the event. So there is, there is a benefit to the community in some of these things. So other than that, that's all I have.
My friend, thank you. You're invited to share as much as you think might be interesting in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item, future agenda items. I don't have any, sir.
None, sir.
Sir, no items for the future. Mayor and Council comments.
Sure, I have, I have a few. The first is to make sure that everybody's aware of the tree lighting coming up December the 8th at 1700, or 5 o'clock, 5:00 PM. Megan already mentioned C cap. Just to go back and talk about Veterans Day just for a second, just to make sure that everybody understands. Well, you all understand, because this is a, this is a heavy veteran community. But to give recognition for everybody who went out there and served and they've given a large piece of their, probably young lives and, and even some people that went on and retired. They changed who they were and gave that, gave that to our country so that this could be a better place and we could build a better nation. And I, I just want to give my personal thanks and I'm sure on behalf of the city council as well. And then just to also go back and recognize that November 1963 is the incorporation of the city of Richcrest and I'm sure everybody knows about that, but I just want to bring it up because not, not a lot of people talk about it. So this November does mark the 60-year anniversary. I believe that is, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gorman.
It's been a quiet week in Richcrest, if I can paraphrase Prairie Home Companion. I, I got a feeling though, there's a little drama building in the water universe. Richcrest was mentioned in that regard in the LA Times recently. And I think that DI reprinted that article, nice, long informational article. And also the News Review had on the front page, what got my attention. Look, it sounded like a letter to the editor, but it, it stood there as a news article talking about Assembly Bill 779, which I had to do a little bit of research and I was out of my depth trying to understand what it did. I expect that soon, the Water District, which felt slightly abraded by the Times article, may issue their own rebuttal. And there's drama. It's, it offers a new texture to a very ongoing problem. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I want, I want to add one comment. Just want to remember the family of Mr. Mike Mauer, ex-passed council member. So he passed away and his services, we can see his service everywhere in this town. So he was involved in everything. So really appreciate his contribution to the development of this community and his involved, involvement and being a role model for so many younger generations to become leaders in this community. So my condolences to the family of Mike Mauer. So he will be remembered for a long time. Thank you. Yes, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:23. Thank you.